Well, it's my pleasure to welcome everyone. We've got a nice crowd tonight, and we normally do when we talk Police and Fire. My name is Mark Adiego, and this is an open public meeting, so we actually will recognize the council members that are in the hall. Both Vice Mayor Pradeep Gupta and Councilman Richard Garberino at the back of the room have joined us this evening. Others may.[368.43][368.43](APPLAUSE). And if you think that was worthy of clapping, you're gonna like this part. That's all I'm doing, is recognizing that there are three of us here, and that's the only role I play. But I'd like to immediately turn it over to our Chief of Police. You know, we have a couple of spectacular department heads. Jerry Coleman has had a number of careers already. I guess this is his third career with South San Francisco. And then Jeff Azaparty is really a local boy on the other side of the hill, but kind of rose up through the ranks and has had a remarkable career so far, and we are extremely proud of him. And with that, I'd like to invite him up.[411.86][411.86](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, everybody. Like Mayor Adiego said, my name is Jeff Azaparty. I'm the police chief here. And we've had about four police town halls in the last year and a half or so, but this is our first Police and Fire. And I'm honored to be sharing the mic here in this room with the members of our South San Francisco Fire Department, especially our Chief, Jerry Coleman, who's been a shoulder for me and someone, an ear. He's been a fire chief for a long time, and he's always answers the calls when I call him and have employee issues or political issues or things like that. So I very much appreciate Jerry for all his help. What you see now... There we go. So this is a photo of our police, some of the members of our police department. And as you can see, usually we're a very smiley, happy bunch. But actually, this photograph was taken before responding to a police officer's funeral, so we were a little somber that day. But this is some members of our department. And the slide is not... Tony? Tony? Luckily, we have our IT manager, Tony Barrera, here.[498.81][498.81](APPLAUSE). See, it wasn't just me. And we are on TV, by the way, so if you want to, the camera moves around, you just might want to wave and say hello.[511.78][511.78](LAUGHTER). What the slide's gonna show you is a little bit about our police department. South San Francisco Police Department is made up of 83 sworn men and women and 120 total employees. Our department is divided into two different operational functions. We have operations and services. Operations is basically your patrol, your detectives, your street teams, your canines, your motors. And services are our dispatch center, our evidence, and our records area. I'm gonna just add lip. If you didn't know, we currently dispatch for not only you, the citizens of South San Francisco, but we also dispatch for the citizens of Pacifica 24 hours a day. Thank you, Tony. Which makes me feel very comfortable when I sleep at night, because I happen to live over the hill in Pacifica. So I like that if I need to call 911, I'm very comfortable with the people that are answering the phone. So when that contract occurred, and we made that switch for the city of Pacifica about four years ago, I was a very happy resident. And we also dispatch for the town of Colma between the hours of midnight and 8:00 in the morning. Good? One of the things that we're challenged with is we are constantly trying to recruit and retain our police officers. Our goal has been, since I took over the job as the police chief here, to have a fully-staffed police department, and it's a challenge. It's hard to bring people to this area because of the cost of living. We have a lot of people that want to be police officers, but tend to look maybe toward the East Bay, where they can live a little bit farther out, where it's a little less expensive. So it's a constant battle for us to get people to live on the peninsula or work on the peninsula. So one of the things we really look to do is we look for South City and for Peninsula men and women, because we know that they've, they were born here, raised here, they have a feeling about this area, and they tend to want to stay and live in this area. So it's something that we're constantly, we're constantly dealing with. And one of the things that we created was a hiring team. And this team is made up of a cross-section of our police officers. And what we do is we go out to colleges, we go out to academies throughout the Bay Area. We created a recruiting video. We play the video, we talk about South San Francisco. We don't even talk about not only just the police department, but the city of South San Francisco. What a great city it is to work for, how supportive our community is for us, and having you all show up is an example of that. So we're really, you know, trying our best to sell what a great place this is to live and to work. And one of the things that we've, we want to thank you for, because it's an issue we've been dealing with for quite some time, is the building that we currently are staying in. The police department has been in this building since 1980. This building was actually a value giant years ago that I'm sure some of you remember. That was a little bit before my time. I do remember coming over the hill to Dordian Dunn, which is right on the other side of this shopping center. But because of that, and because of 1980, our police department was, looked a lot differently. For example, back then, we had one female police officer and about eight female employees. Well, now we have 25% of our employees are females. So as you can imagine, our space for females, like our locker rooms, are very, is very small. And besides that, this building, considering it was built in the '50s, is not compliant with our earthquake standards, so it's something that we've always kind of worried about. And thankful to you, you passed Measure W. And we're very much excited and hopeful and looking forward to, you know, one day seeing that vision of building a new police department. And we feel that will help with our service, and it's also gonna help with our retention. Excuse me, one sec. Okay. Tony, next slide? Okay. The South San Francisco Police Department, one of the things I think we do very well is our involvement in the community. We have over 30 community programs that we're involved in. One of them that we just started last year, that actually Captain Ron Carlini started for us, is a youth academy. And just today, about an hour and a half ago in this room, we graduated 30 students, sixth graders, that went through an eight-week... These students came from a cross-section of our city, and they graduated from an eight-week, hour and a half a week program, where the police department combines with South San Francisco Park and Rec and the Boys and Girls Club of America. And we teach them a little bit about being, what it's like to be in law enforcement, some of the things that we do. It's not all the glitz and the glamour. There's a lot of work that's done. That is not always the most exciting, but it's very necessary. Most importantly, I think, is that we learn about what's going on in a sixth grader's mind here in South San Francisco. And we're building relationships with these children, and we're hoping that when they see us in the future, that they're gonna want to be maybe more comfortable about coming up, talking to us, hopefully being a part of the community themselves. And we've modeled this class after our Citizens Academy and our Hispanic Community Academy. It's been our second session. Our first was 16, 16 students. This one, we just graduated 30, and it looks like we have enough interest that we're gonna do a second one this year. So what started out as an idea by Captain Ron Carlini was turning it to a program that I think is gonna be here to stay. And I think we all know how important it is to tap into our youth as early as possible. So we're very excited about that. Tony? Okay. It's not always the best of topics, but there are different crimes and trends that occur in our city. But these crimes don't occur just in South San Francisco. They also happen along the peninsula in San Mateo County. And what we're seeing is, is actually it's happening throughout the state of California. And the crimes that have been more popular are crimes such as vehicle burglaries, residential burglaries, and stolen vehicles. I had a town hall that I held here last November, when we probably had 400 people, because at the time, we had a rash of burglaries in the Berry-Berry neighborhood. And it was something that the neighborhood, the neighbors were extremely concerned about, and no one was more concerned than we were. It's not acceptable, it's not what we want here in South San Francisco, it's not what we're used to, and we're not gonna accept it. And we put a ton of resources, we got more citizen feedback than I think we ever had in my 24 years here, and you helped us learn a little bit more about these criminals as far as a time element, about phone calls. We got more calls of people, suspicious people in the neighborhood, and sometimes it was a neighbor that you just didn't know. And, but they were walking around at night, and people were worried. It didn't matter. We contacted everyone, and we were able to make a couple of arrests, as well as work with our neighboring agencies that made arrests, and those, that those rash of residential burglaries have stopped. And it doesn't mean that we're not still on high alert, because the people that were committing these probably aren't the people that are gonna learn from their mistakes. When they get out of jail, they're probably gonna do the same thing again. But now, they know that we're on to them, and that the city of South San Francisco and our neighboring agencies that helped us, like San Bruno and Daly City in Pacifica, we're just not gonna stand for it. And we're gonna spend as much time as we have to and resources to make sure that doesn't happen again. That was a direct result of that meeting, allowing people the comfort to call us whenever, at any time, and us spending as many resources as we can and time, and we all worked together on that, and it came with a positive outcome. Doesn't mean we still don't have residential burglaries, or we're not gonna still have vehicle burglaries, but it just means we're learning more about this group of people or the type of people that do these, and we're gonna be vigilant and making sure that they don't happen again. The main trend is just, is that. And that's what, as a county, we have monthly meetings with our detectives and all the way up to our chiefs when we talk about what we can do to provide the resources. And our city council has been very generous and grateful in allowing us the resources to make sure that you feel safe in your homes. Okay. One of this, the top one, might seem obvious, but sometimes people are hesitant to do it. Thank you. Thanks. If you witness anything, any crime, anything, call 911. If you think, "I'm not sure if I should call 911," or call the emergency, the non-emergency number, call 911. When in doubt, call that number. That's gonna get us there the quickest, and that's what we want to do. We want to make sure that you're safe, we want to make sure that we have the best opportunity to catch the people that might be involved. Second, it's really important, is it might not be an emergency, but you might look out your window, you might look down the street, and you see someone that does not look right. I believe in trusting your instincts. If your instincts tells you that something's not right with this person, please call us. If it turns out to be somebody visiting one of your neighbors, that's okay. We explain to them why we're stopping them, and we'll get them on their way as soon as, as soon as we can. But we want to know who are in our neighborhoods, and you have the eyes and you have the ears, so please, call us. There's no such thing as something too small to give us a call. And basically, we want to provide anyone, the number, and I have, the last slide has some phone numbers for you, but 877-8900 is the number that gets you to us short of 911. So we ask you, please feel free to call us. All right, Tony? All right. Just a few things, a few tips. And we went over this before, and we have this on our website, but it's always good to remind you. Lock and secure your residence at all times. Add lighting when you can, especially in the shadowed areas of your house. We ask that we're all, and I did the same thing at my house, we're all responsible for lighting up the front of our house. That's us as residents. So as much as you can, try to do that. Trim your trees and shrubs around the perimeter of your home or property. Allows people a harder time to hide, it takes away some shadows that they provide, and it keeps your house clear and easy for us to see. Install fencing and gate locks, install alarm systems and home security cameras. These aren't, we're not asking you to go home and do all of these, but just take this, take it for what it is, as advice, and if you can do it, do it. Pick up and collect your mail and newspapers. You don't want people to think that you're gone. You want them to think that you're home. That's why you leave porch light on at night and stuff like that. The important thing is to be a good neighbor. Watch, Neighborhood Watch type concept. Look out for each other. I do remember when I was a little bit younger, they had a thing called block parents, and it was something that you were supposed to run to this stranger's house, and it was okay, because they were a block parent. And that concept has kind of passed on with time for a number of reasons, but what it did, it made you as a kid feel like there were people looking out for you. And we have to do that. We have to do a better job of looking out for each other and getting to know our neighbors. I know we're all busy, life keeps us really busy, but we need to take the time to learn our neighbors, look out for each other, and call us if, anytime you see anything that's suspicious, please. Okay? Get involved, like I mentioned, with Neighborhood Watch. We have an app for the phones, for those of you that are on your smartphones. Engage South San Francisco SSF. Use that to report things if maybe you see something that is not an emergency, or you see something that you don't want to call the 8900 number, but you want to report it, you just would like for us to take a look at it, or for the city to take a look at it, feel free to use that app. Matter of fact, Leslie was gonna remind me, but she's not gonna have to. We do have a form in the back that we ask you, if you want to sign your name and your email address, that way we can get you on a list where you can learn more about what's going on in South San Francisco, we can email you. So please, before you leave, take the time to fill out that list, put your email address down. I remembered. Leslie's our communications director. We are on Facebook, the South San Francisco Police Department. We are on Twitter. We use these as a way of getting our message out. We send press releases and we do other things, but we still, and it's taken us a little while. We were a little bit kind of hesitant to use social media, because it was new to us, and we weren't always comfortable being transparent with what was going on, because we just, it's new to law enforcement. Luckily, that's changed, and now we're more comfortable giving you as much information as we can, as long as it doesn't influence a case, active case that we're working. And we do that. And sometimes it's just letting you know what we're doing at the police department, let you know what's going on, maybe introducing you to an officer of the month. And officers are more comfortable now putting their personal information out there, maybe not where they live, but, or their phone numbers, but a little bit about themselves. And we're just trying to let you know that, you know, we're working with you, we're here for you if you need us, and we do, we do care about this community. Okay, these are some phone numbers. I just want to leave this up for a minute. There's just certain things. Once again, I want to emphasize, 911 is the best way to go if you are in doubt at all. And feel free to call us. The anonymous tip line is often very helpful to us. People don't want to leave their name, but they want to leave some information. That's fine with us, too. We just, we just want the information. We don't care really how we get it. We want you to feel comfortable to call us at any time. I'm gonna hand this now over to Jerry, so he can go over the fire department, and at the end, we'll have, feel free to ask any questions that you have. We have a boatload of firefighters and police officers here that may have to help us answer some questions. And if not, at the end, they're all here, willing to answer any questions you might have from them if you are not comfortable asking it in a public environment. But I'll be back up to answer some questions after Jerry. Thank you very much for your time.[1482.15][1482.15](APPLAUSE).
Well, I was sitting there facing forward. I had no idea these people would come in. As Chief Azaparty said, I'm Jerry Coleman, and I'm relatively new to the South San Francisco Fire Department. I've been here about a year and a half. And I had actually gone into the private sector after concluding my fire service career, and when this position opened up, I had not anticipated coming back into the fire service. But I was attracted to this community, and I was attracted to this fire department because of what we're gonna talk about tonight. There's a number of things that are unique to the South San Francisco Fire Department. A few of the people are unique, but other than that, we've got some really good folks here. When I came to South San Francisco, I had hoped for a shorter, not as good-looking police chief to compete with. That didn't work out so well, so I'm hoping other things will go well. I do have the unique opportunity of working with a great fire department, people here who really care. As we go through the slides, I'll tell you a little bit about the ride-alongs I've done with our crews, and how that level of care translates from their attitude to their hands-on our patients out there in the street. South San Francisco Fire is unique in that we have services beyond what traditional fire services might be. In addition to fire prevention and education, we have code enforcement. The fire chief also works under the city manager on our emergency operations plan, emergency operations center, and we use Ken Anderson, not a harder-working guy in the emergency management business than Ken Anderson, to work with our CERT team and our emergency preparedness. You might think of the traditional fire role. When you look at what we do, we've got some statistics, which we won't dive by PowerPoint, but I'll tell you that the scope of our service has changed a little bit. And this slide describes a day in the South San Francisco Fire Department. So for the day this was generated, the department had 911 called 19 times to call our resources out. But I'll tell you about our response vehicles in a minute, and how that equates to vehicle operations and our response. So for that year, and it was May 1st that these numbers arrived, we had gone out the door 2,200 times on 911 calls. So that number, by the end of this year, will grow to about 6,500 responses that we've done. The other number, that 5,165, reflects how many times we've safely operated one of our fire department vehicles on an emergency response. That number will grow to about 35,000 times. That doesn't count administrative, but our folks are out in the road a lot, taking care of business. That pie chart for the day, you don't need the details from it, but basically, the big blue area is emergency medical services. And that's another area where this fire department excels. We provide ambulance transport, and we will transport about 4,000 patients this year. It's, it's an incredible service when you ride along with our crews and you watch the transition of care from our first-in paramedics on our engines in Quint. As the ambulance arrives, it's a seamless transition, because our paramedics, our firefighter paramedics, are working the ambulance one day and maybe the engine the next. Our private providers in the surrounding area of San Mateo County, very good ambulance service, very good paramedics. It's just not quite the same as what you get when you get a South San Francisco Fire Department ambulance. We get asked about call volume by station. What's busy, what's slow? Again, the details along the bottom, left to right, 61, 62, 63, 4 and 5. Basically, what that's telling you is the station on Canal is the blue bar. 62 is over on the east side of 101. 63 is right here at the MSB. 64 is up in Westboro, and 65 is in Terra Bay. That's not just where they operate. They're not anchored to the station, but that's their primary responsibility. Those numbers only tell you what occurs in their neighborhood. But remember that 35,000 number for 6,000 calls? They're constantly working with other vehicles, with other companies, to serve our community. Our primary response vehicle, and does anybody have a question that says, "Why do you drive around this big vehicle when you're just running an errand?" It's, it's the coin of the realm. It's really, it's what we operate in all day. It's our business office. It goes wherever we go. They're constantly on the radio and available for a call. It doesn't matter what the hazard is. That vehicle carries 600 gallons of water, a whole bunch of fire hose, ladders, our advanced life support gear, our defibrillator, our drugs, and the crew. So they're prepared for whatever happens when they're not... So they're prepared for whatever happens when they're notified on the road by radio that they have an incident to respond to. For a common medical call, we will send one of those vehicles. Of course, common is not so common if it's you that we're going to take care of, but we will send the closest available piece of equipment with a paramedic on it to your medical call. Then we have two advanced life support ambulances. They're centralized in the city, so we have, or distributed in the city, so we have one at the MSB, one at, over on Canal, and we have two firefighter paramedics onboard. They are cross-trained dual-role personnel. So that means if we have a fire in town, this same vehicle can go to that. Our people are equipped to go right in and fight fire. We've got 20 people on duty every day. That's our firefighting force essentially within the city. We have this vehicle on the east side of 101 and we have a spare as well, a reserve, but this is the latter device every city has, or most cities of our size will have. It's a 100-foot telescoping aerial platform. It's capable of flowing 2,000 gallons a minute, which is a whole lot of water, and we can put firefighters up in the basket with an aerial stream, or we use it just like one of the pumpers. So it's kind of a dual-role vehicle. It doesn't mean you get twice the capacity. You just get twice the capability. So we'll stack those together and if we have a medical call, you'll get one engine, one ambulance. If we have a vehicle accident, you'll get an engine, ambulance and a battalion chief. If there's smoke reported in your building, just like today over on California, you'll get the closest three engines, a ladder truck, a battalion chief. And you can see how it continues to build. We want to have the right amount of people on scene to take care of that incident before it grows. You'd also ask, "Why would we send a fire engine to a car accident?" We send both an engine and ladder truck. This, the quint carries all of our extrication equipment. If you're stuck in the car and we have to remove the car from you, you'll want to know that we've got 600 gallons of water there in case the car catches fire. So it's kind of a symphony that goes on, but we don't do it blindly. There's some science behind it and some art. We want to get there within seven minutes. So we have here in South San Francisco, an incredibly good 911 notification system. It goes right into this building to police communications. They triage it. We go to San Mateo County Communications for dispatch of the closest resource. So in most cases, that's going to be a South San Francisco resource. We want to reach you within seven minutes of your call. That's not an arbitrary number. Six to eight minutes is when, if someone's non-breathing, is when brain death begins to occur. As fire growth occurs, it grows exponentially. So if we can get there within the first seven or eight minutes and extinguish it in what we call the incipient phase, or before it grows beyond requiring more resources, less damage to your property, less risk to our firefighters. So it's one minute to get through the call handling, two minutes for them to alert the station, alert the crew, the crew to get on the apparatus. We want to do four minutes of road time to get to your call, and that's why our stations are distributed the way they are. So the total experience for you would be between seven and eight minutes. Our ambulances are getting there within, I think, Rich, what's our average for ambulances now?
Six minutes plus.
We're getting you an ambulance behind the first U-engine or the first U-quint in about seven minutes as well. You're not going to get that kind of service outside the city. It's a little bit hard to see and you don't need to work on the detail, but the hay-colored or light brown-colored area is South San Francisco and it shows our five stations. They're located in there. The point I want to make here is, and when you see engines in town, if you're in town and you see an engine cruising through and it says 81, 92, we train in the whole zone. So we train with Pacifica, we train with Daly City, we train with Brisbane. They're quite often at our training tower. We're quite often at the cliffs over in Pacifica. If they are in town and they're the closest unit to a medical call, they will jump it and take it. We cooperate that way all day. If South San Francisco has a fire, all of our units are on the fire. The other agencies will be moved into our city, as we will for the neighboring cities. It all occurs automatically. There's two terms. There's mutual aid, which you hear about in the big wildland fires. That's because somebody ran out of capacity. Automatic aid is you give us an address and we'll send you the closest unit. So it doesn't matter what city you're in, you're going to get the closest unit. How are we organized? The fire chief oversees administration and fire prevention. Our deputy chief's position oversees our operational people. So we talked about, there's 20 people on duty every day. They're supervised by a battalion on the, battalion chief on the A-shift, B-shift and the C-shift. So that's your force out there every day in our ambulances, our engines, our quint, battalion chief's vehicle to take care of you. Now, we do have a unique work schedule. We got a question about recruitment. Chief Azaparty mentioned that recruitment is a challenge. One of the compensations that the fire department created amongst the 24-hour shift is we linked two together. So now someone who wants to work for the South San Francisco Fire Department, and this is a desirable place to work, they have the ability to commute a little bit longer, come in, work two consecutive 24-hour shifts, then go home. So that's how we compensate for that. We do that with three shifts. We don't have swing day and night. We cover all seven days with only three shifts. Prevention and code enforcement, we link up. It's a big team that takes care of this. We get out to the elementary schools, we get out to high schools every year, our line staff, our prevention staff. Our intention is to get out and educate to avert a problem. That doesn't always work. There are things that happen. There are vehicle accidents that occur, accidents that occur and medical issues. So we're still going to have incidents to respond to, no matter how much we can educate, but if we can help somebody out, we want to do that. We also have what we call the engineered element to that. South San Francisco has a building code that doesn't allow combustible roofs. That's an example of an engineered protection that reduces the risk to the overall city. So we look and work with the building department on our municipal code, building codes, fire codes. We also conduct plan checks from the fire and life safety, the panic element of any building construction. So as you can imagine, the projects here in South San Francisco are getting more and more complex all the time. We also do the complaint inspections and we have a bumper crop of grass and weeds and they all, it wasn't there a while ago, was it? Then it popped up, turned green, turned brown. Now it's very, very visible. So we are on those complaint inspections as well as generating our own. Emergency management applies to the whole city. It applies to the city and how we integrate with the county of San Mateo. There is a whole system that's replicated from our local area to the county, to the region, to the state, all the way up to the federal government, and we follow those frameworks. We do have an excellent emergency operations center. The city has planned ahead. The council has been behind the planning on emergency operations, emergency operations plan and our center to operate out of. An element, one of the crown jewels of South San Francisco is our community emergency response team. We have the largest roster of any CERT team in the county. And for our size, it's an incredible number of folks. I think it's over 100, isn't it, Ken?
117.
Okay, it might be a little over 100 at 117. Then we have of that, and most people are pretty active, but we're in the 60s and 70s of people who are very, very active. They're over at Station 61 at the EOC right now doing a radio test. There's Ken. Was that your soccer coach mover? And, you know, Chief Azaparty was complimentary to the fire department. I have got to tell you that the cooperating, the spirit of cooperation between police and fire in the city is second to none. You'll see them operate out in the field. You'll see us working together. We've been working together on new threats to South San Francisco. You know, as society has evolved, they have been our technical experts. They have helped us through determining a number of procedures, even down to equipment that we use. So the working relationship between South CDPD and South City Fire is excellent. The engagement that we have from all department heads in our emergency management program has been exceptional. Ken has hosted, I think, four drills, four full-scale exercises in our EOC and our department heads have not flinched a lot, at all, and our city manager is behind us developing those skills. So with the department head team that I get to work with, this is a pretty darn good place to work and I certainly enjoy being here. But back to the police department for a minute. They always scoop us with a picture of one of their dogs. We're not going to let that happen tonight. So this is the only FEMA search dog assigned to a city fire department in San Mateo County. So our handler's Tom Carney and that's a picture of Gypsy, I think, during the toy drive. So if you need to get ahold of us on a non-emergency situation, that's 650-829-3950 is our admin number. But as Chief Azaparty said, if you have any question, if you need our help, our dispatchers are trained to triage your incident. So don't feel like you're crying wolf. If you have a problem, you give us a call, we'll figure out who to send out to take care of you. That's our number one responsibility. That's our mission.
Does anybody have any questions? I've got a microphone that I can bring over to you.
Thank you very much. My name is Claudia. I live in Burry-Bury neighborhood and I want to thank all of the officials tonight for helping us. I've lived here a long time and this is the first time, honestly, that I've felt really safe in this city. Anyway, I had sent in some questions, most of which you have addressed. They had to do with the hiring and retention of personnel, but one of the things that I'm curious about, because the city is growing so tremendously, all you have to do is look at the skyline east of 101 and it doesn't look like it used to. So I'm wondering, how do you know what your staffing requirements are as the city expands? And we have different types of structures now, you know, the high-rises, the large campuses. And I guess the final question maybe would be for the city manager is, at what point can you say that the city has grown enough?
Well, I think the mayor or city manager can handle the, "Has it grown enough?" You want this on record?
No, this is...
It's good to have the police chief behind you, especially when he's shoving you towards the microphone. From the firefighting standpoint, we are in a period where certain hazards are being reduced by installed and engineered protections in these new buildings, but we're having other issues come in that we want to pay special attention to. Our on-duty firefighting force of 20 right now, what we do is we are getting better at measuring the demand. So we actually, going back to the seven minutes, will look at what's the call demand on our existing distribution or deployment of resources. When that becomes weaker, we look at adding resources to what we do is to increase the reliability, to make sure you're getting the service level that this city selects as a policy decision. So when we reduce certain hazards, we're going to start looking at different deployments for our resources. We're going to keep what we have now, as long as we can afford it, but we're going to keep that and as we look at growing the organization, we'll be making recommendations on what we may do to change our deployment, to add staff, to add different types of vehicles, but we want to maintain that basic firefighting, that basic emergency response capability. One of the elements we don't talk about a lot is each of the fire stations is going to become a community center when it comes down to a large-scale disaster. That's going to be a rallying point for the communities, we think. So we want to keep that base level of protection going and look at what we're going to have to do, one, to accommodate the unique occupancies coming into town, and secondly, the call demand. Because as population goes up, it's not a linear effect when population goes up. You may have more people, but if they're outside of a certain category, they're not going to drive a whole lot more demand. Their vehicles may, congestion may impede that four-minute travel, but if you were to bring in a large retirement community, it affects you differently than you hit mid-career working professionals who want to live near where they work. So we're keeping an eye on that.
I can give you the police department answer for that as far as, we base our staffing as a general rule on per thousand people. So the average officers per thousand people in San Mateo County is 1.3. In South San Francisco, it's 1.2. So we are actually better than the county average. There's other things that go into play, but we are very comfortable with our numbers. Now, as our city grows and our population changes, it'll be something that we'll work with the council and with our city manager and keep an eye on. But generally, right now, we're very comfortable with the amount of officers we have per thousand. And our city manager, Mike Fratell, is actually out of the state. His daughter's graduating from college, so that's why he's not here tonight.
Hello, my name's Bill Demeter and this is for the police chief. Sorry, I don't quite have a handle on your last name.
Azaparty.
Thank you. I came here with one issue. I have two. I'm going to touch on the first one briefly because you brought it up, actually. I attended that November meeting and as you recall, there was quite an uproar about street lighting. And that actually motivated me to look into the issue and I've been active with it ever since. Again, tonight you asked us to keep an eye out and help you, and we can't do that without proper street lighting. I know Public Works claims that it's a traffic issue and a pedestrian issue, but the street lighting is just not adequate. And I just bring that up because you mentioned the meeting and you mentioned us keeping an eye out and we can't do it in a dark neighborhood. So I've been dealing with city council on that. I'll be dealing with them in the next meeting on that issue, but I just wanted to bring it up. The other thing I wanted to bring up is traffic enforcement. I am getting tired of seeing people run red lights and we all take some liberty with traffic laws at one time or another, but that can be fatal. And I, at the intersection of Westboro and El Camino the other day, I almost got taken out by a guy that just blew through a red light. And I don't see much traffic enforcement here. Actually, I don't see it much anywhere anymore, including San Francisco. I've got to assume that a cycle cop pretty much pays for himself through tickets. And I'm just wondering, why aren't the laws being enforced? Because it's just, it's the Wild West out there.
Well, actually, we currently have four motorcycle officers. We're hoping to get a fifth. And red light violations are, you're right, one of the most dangerous violations and our officers are out throughout the town working red lights. They're also working stop signs and speeding, but red lights is something that we're very concerned about and we do work it and we do work Westboro and El Camino quite often. As far as there being less motor officers or you're seeing less motor officers out there, one of the things that we're doing as a county now, from North County and Central County, it's called a STEP program and it's a selective traffic enforcement program where we actually combine with the other cities and we'll pick a particular city every month and spend maybe half a day doing nothing but writing tickets on selective enforcement in that city. I think about a week and a half ago, we had, an award was given to Stanley Roberts, who's the gentleman who does the people behaving badly. He works with this selected traffic group and we were here and we had about 35 motor officers here working traffic that day. Now, I know it's one day, but it's an example of us taking the situation very seriously. We also, for the seventh consecutive year, received an Office of Traffic Safety, an OTS grant, where we specifically deal with speeders, stop sign violations, red light violators, DUI drivers. Where actually, some of the DUI drivers that we have that are habitual DUI drivers, we actually proactively contact them, let them know that we're going to be, you know, watching them. It's, the amount of traffic enforcement we do is as much as we can with the enforcement. I'm sorry you don't see as many. They're out there. I think it just might be a, maybe a timing thing, but it's something that we absolutely take serious, especially red light violators.
The video cameras, are those no longer active?
Those are no longer active.
What happened with that?
The decision was made to no longer have them. That was four, four years, five years ago?
Right.
I can't speak to why that decision was made. I can't speak to why that decision was made.
Hi, my name is Linda Redding, and I just first want to say I love living here. This is a wonderful community. What I've noticed a little bit, and just want to get some feedback on my interpretation, is I'm seeing more graffiti. And is that being connected to we're having more gang activity? Or what's our status for that type of situation in the city?
Okay. So, graffiti is two different types. There's the graffiti that is not gang-related, that is just people wanting to tag, say, you know, whatever their moniker is, or whatever they want to, they write the same name. And then there's graffiti that's gang graffiti. And unfortunately, we have, we have both in South San Francisco, as we do up and down the peninsula. But on a daily basis, people have actually gotten a lot better at calling it in, because we have a program where we will, when, when someone can't paint it over themselves, the city is quick to respond to help paint over graffiti. And we also have our officers, our police service technicians, that are taking reports daily on graffiti. What we do is, we have gang officers that are specifically trained and have the ability to look at graffiti, and we monitor it, especially if it's gang-related. Because sometimes it tells you a story of what's going on in a neighborhood. When our city manager was hired here about two years ago, one of the things that he started was what we call a clean team. And this is a combination team with police, Public Works, fire, code enforcement. And we're actively trying to, you know, clean up the city. And one of our main focuses is graffiti. And it's not just graffiti in the neighborhoods, it's graffiti by the train tracks. And if Jerry wants to touch on the code enforcement aspect of graffiti?
As Chief Asaparty stated, we work as partners in the graffiti issue. None of us really appreciate it as what it's intended to be, I guess, artwork. But it's a significant impact to the city. We do work in conjunction with, with police so that they get a look at it before it's eliminated or taken out. So, it can be read whether or not that's a factor. As Chief Asaparty said, it's not always a factor and may not even be the dominant factor. But we need the help of commercial occupancy owners, homeowners, to have that painted out. We will make contact when we find that. When it's city-owned property or public space, we work with Public Works to have it eliminated. We've taken a little bit different tact in working for some of the spaces Chief Asaparty described, some of the rights of way we don't have control over. In the past, we've attempted to take care of that locally. It has not yielded a long-term solution. So, with the patience of some of our other business owners, we've worked with folks like Caltrain, a very positive relationship in attempting to reduce access from their rights of way to some of the areas that have been painted. So, it's a little bit longer path, but we're hoping a little bit more definitive outcome than what we've seen before. Our Public Works Department has been very active, working with Caltrain to get access to the appropriate portions of Caltrain. It's a place we cannot be as untrained personnel. Very, very dangerous environment. I don't know if you remember the, the incident with BART and their rail vehicle versus people on the tracks. We're not going to put our, our people in jeopardy. We're going to have the pros out there and help us with that. So, we do have it cropping up around town. I don't know of any specific hotspots, but if you see it, you can contact code enforcement. You can contact PD, engage SSF. All three of us will be involved in that remediation.
Oh, hi. My name is Phyllis, and I want to compliment the police department in South San Francisco. I think they're the best in the San Mateo County. We need to give them a hand. I haven't used the fire department as much as I have used the police department, so I'm sure they do just as good of a job. Anyway, my question is, that trail, walking trail, running trail on Chestnut, is it any safer than it has been? Has there been any attacks lately, or what's going on there? I don't feel safe. I don't use it. It's close by to where I live, so I go to Millbury to do my running because it's safer.
So, to answer your question, we're out there a lot. We have a lot of officers that actually will get out and walk it, or our bike patrol officers will ride it. And I do believe it is safe. We have not had a, you know, I'm going to knock on wood here. We have not had an attack or an assault on that trail for several months. Matter of fact, the last couple that we had were, where the people knew each other. It was a fight between people that met out there to fight. But then it ends up, what that does is it makes people hear that there's an assault on the trail, and they think it's not safe. I think you should always be aware of your surroundings and, and go where you feel safe. But I'm very comfortable with our citizens walking on that trail and being a part of that trail. We have a lot of people that walk on it every day. Our city council members walk on the trail. Our employees walk on the trail on their lunch break. I was at the corporation yard today, and two female employees had just gotten back from walking on the trail on their lunch break. So, I understand, and I think it's very important for you to go where you feel safe. But I think our trail is very safe, and I hope that you give it another shot. Well, do you, do you have a cellular phone? Do you have a cellphone?
I have a cellphone.
Okay. So, I would always suggest bringing your cellphone with you, but at, at the moment, there are not... Well, that is something that we did look into with some Mezzera monies at the time, and we were, we were denied. But that is something that I'm sure we can look into in the future as well. But try to find that cellphone before you go walking. And thank you for the kind words, even for the fire department.
Hi, my name's Dave Lynn Perez. I live in Sunshine Gardens for a little over 30 years now, so I've seen it change quite a bit. You've asked us to keep an eye on our neighborhood and our surroundings and the people that come and go. And I know all my neighbors after being there for so long. But when BART moved in, we were given permits or told to get permits so that we could have parking in our neighborhoods. And as the city grows, so does the demand for parking near BART. And no longer are we required to have permits. So, we do have a lot of people that are walking through our neighborhoods that are not my neighbors, especially during successful sporting events, when people want to park near the BART because they want to bart into the city. And I'm wondering, is the police department looking at bringing back that permit so that we, as residents in the neighborhood, can, one, have parking, and, two, monitor who is coming in, if they're strangers, you know, or if they are just passer-bys? Is there any attempt to try and bring that back so that we can have a safe neighborhood?
Parking is, is an issue in South San Francisco, as it is in, in every neighborhood on the peninsula, unfortunately. Yeah, some of our neighborhoods still do have permitted areas. And we have recently just automated that permit process, which made it, has made it a lot easier for us to follow. Our current stance is if you're registered, if your car is registered to the house, you know, you can have a permit. It's not for work vehicles. It's only for resident, it's vehicles that belong to a specific residence. We did do a study about a year ago, and it appeared that the demand for permits in that area wasn't needed. But it is something that, that I would be happy to look into again. If maybe we can talk after this meeting, if you can let me know where you live. It's something that we can have our traffic officers look into for sure.
Hi, I'm David. I live in Brentwood. And the gentleman's completely right about the street lighting. It's way inadequate, like there's not enough lighting. I don't worry about it because I have a German Shepherd dog. And the other thing was the traffic enforcement. If you go to Seize Candy at Spruce and El Camino any weekday morning at 6:00 AM, you'll see all the bread trucks running the red light, going south on El Camino off of Spruce, and big giant trucks and contractors. And when you're trying to turn left onto Hazelwood going north on El Camino, when your arrow turns green and you jump out there, there's vehicles running the red light going south on El Camino. They don't seem to care. And most of them are commercial drivers, so they should know better.
Okay. We do have our graveyard sergeant here, Don Olson, who gets off at 7:00 in the morning. So, he'll be working at 6:00 in the morning, and that was Spruce and El Camino, and Hazelwood and El Camino. So, Sergeant Olson will be keeping an eye on that in the mornings.
Chief Asaparty, I spoke at Joe Pharaoh's and Joe Semidion's Town Hall meeting a few Sundays ago. My concern is this intersection at Costco in El Camino Real turning right for pedestrians. I'm probably not going to be able to cross that anymore. It's very, very dangerous. People leave Costco turning right, and they want to cross maybe...
To go northbound El Camino?
Going northbound. Maybe they want to cross three lanes, but they're leaving with a cellphone in their hand. They couldn't care less whether there's a pedestrian there or not. That light should really be right turn on green arrow only. There are El Camino students and Altonoma students as well crossing during the school year.
Okay. Thank you. I will pass it on to our, to our traffic advisory committee and to our motor unit as well.
Hi, my name is Catherine, and I live in Sunshine Gardens. Thank you, by the way, for your service, along with Diane and Katie, my neighbors. I moved here about, about four years ago with my husband. We bought a house, and I'm really concerned about this. It's like a T-intersection. It's at Sunnyside and Holly. And it's super hard to either turn right or left because people park on the corners. And I know there's overflow from, from apartment buildings and, but I thought it was illegal to park on the corner. So, hopefully, there could be more enforcement about, you know, or ticketing for people who park on the corners. But I would, I think it would be fantastic to have a stop sign there. Also, the intersection that's closer to our house on Sunnyside and Forest View, that also should have a stop sign because people just blow right through, and it's an accident waiting to happen, I think. I have a four-month-old daughter now, so I'm strolling around, so I'm much more sensitive, sensitive to it.
They're literally parked where you have to walk sideways between the cars to get in the street. If you have a stroller, if you're moving, you are totally messed up. I know a lot of the parking people work during the day, but when the officers, if they have free time, even at 3:00 AM, start ticketing them, and they'll get the message. They know that at night, they're not going to get a ticket. The guys, you know, officers are busy.
Did I tell you that we have Sergeant Don Olson, our graveyard sergeant, here tonight? So, yes, you know, parking on a corner, and I know exactly the Sunnyside. I know where you take a left or right on Holly. If people are parked on those corners, it's going to be very difficult. And that is something that we can enforce. So, yes, that'll be for sure passed on. As far as... Exactly. As far as the stop sign, that issue, I can, I can report out to our, our TAC, our traffic advisory. Okay? Doesn't mean that they'll put something there, but they will know that it's a, it's a problem. Okay?
I'm Don Jacoberg, and I have a question about the fire safety. There's, on private property, there's grasses growing about three feet high. And I can, concerned it could be a fire hazard. This is specifically on Delvin Way up in Westborough.
And as Chief Asaparty has done, I'd like to let you know that our Fire Marshal, Luis DeSilva, is here this evening with a notepad, so you two can connect, and we'll make sure we get that into the complaint process.
Thank you. My name is Sunny Koya. I live where Martin's school is, in that area. First of all, I'm very grateful for all the wonderful service provided to South San Francisco by the police department and equally by the fire department. I personally sleep better at night knowing that there are officers out there watching over us, and we have the wonderful fire department. When service is necessary, they are there for us. I have one recommendation to make that is relating to the code enforcement department. Code enforcement is a very, very important section of fire department. It actually works hand-in-hand with the police department. And as anyone will tell you, where there is a code violation, it's actually the code, code enforcement department that goes in there, investigates, and does what is necessary to make it abate, be it a blight or just plain code enforcement. When there is lack of such enforcement is when problems begin in the neighborhood. And eventually, it becomes, it escalates to a point that the police department then has to become involved. So, the code enforcement department is very important to us. My recommendation is, we need to look into the resources that we have for the code, code enforcement department at the moment. I personally feel that we need additional personnel. If we can persuade the city council to look into this and add some more people, that would be wonderful. We have some people who are a little bit overworked. And on a final note, I'd like to thank Inspector Tom Carney for the outstanding work he does, and along with him, all of the other code officers who, you know, on daily basis, go out there and investigate and do what's necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sunny. Also, yeah, we have five really motivated folks who work code, code enforcement and fire prevention, which does fit together pretty well, because if we're inspecting for one, it's, it's efficient to, to look at the other as well. We do have some cases in town that have gone on for an extended period of time. And we're, like we were talking about graffiti, we're taking a little bit different approach because we're looking at what some of the root cause elements are for these, even if it's mental health. Because we've run into some cases in town where, where that's a factor. So, we're not going in to be intrusive. We're not going to be adversarial, but we're working with multiple agencies on some of these longer-term issues. And certainly, we had, I think, 1,047 cases open last year, and we closed more than that. So, we're starting to catch a little bit with the, with the balance, I think, in the 200s now, 200s to 300s. That's greatly down from where we were. So, we'd like to take a look at the actions we've taken, the outcomes, before we make a recommendation for more people. I certainly appreciate the support from more people. Would always accept more people. But we want to make sure that, that we don't grow a force that is going to have to then be retracted. So, we've also looked at the potential for bringing in an outside excess-capacity kind of resource to help us with this. So, but I thank you for the comments.
Any other questions or comments?
This is for the fire chief. I know, but I want to, I want to talk about weeds, weed abatement.
Well, he may be, okay, you clarified that, because he could have been the guy to talk to you also.
Since you were talking about Tom Carney, he's done an excellent job around the Burry-Bury Elementary School construction and all the problems that have been there. But, you know, the, the contractors created this Burry-Bury Hill, you know, this enormous mountain of dirt. And it's my understanding that the relationship with that construction company has gone away, and so things are kind of not, nothing's happening. But that mountain now is a huge fire hazard because it has tall weeds. And it's my understanding, the contractor took responsibility for the property during the construction. So, the school district, at least this is what they said in some of the community meetings, is that they didn't have any responsibility for the, the property while it was under construction. I think it's called a lend lease or something like that. Anyway, I want to know, since all of us who live along that ravine area have to pay gardeners to come in and clear our back properties, who's going to take responsibility for the Burry-Bury mountain there and the tall weeds? Because that is a major fire hazard right next to the school.
It doesn't matter who we find to be the property owner. We will enforce the municipal code equally there. And we've worked with the city attorney's office extensively on ownership rights, right of entry. It's even more convoluted because it's a state education property. So, again, we want to make sure we have the right element engaged to take care of it. I have a sneaking suspicion that if Sergeant Olson doesn't care of this tonight, Fire Marshal Luis DeSilva will be tomorrow. We'll get out there and take a look and see how that's progressed and work with the most appropriate body to get that, whether it's the school district or whether it's a successor to the contractor.
Any other comments, questions?
Questions?
I think Sergeant Don Olson is around the block all the way to the--
Chiefs, any last parting thoughts on your end?
The only thing I'd like to add is if anybody has, I will come see you. And if anybody has any other questions, we have a lot of police officers here, a lot of firefighters here, I'm sure, would be willing to answer any question you might have. I want to thank you all very much for showing up. It shows that you care and listening to the two of us. We're very passionate about the city of South San Francisco, as I know you are, and just thank you again for your continued support.
I'm happy to follow Chief As a Party's comments. Excellent comments. I agree with all of that. I thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. This is, the civil engagement is part of what was attractive about South San Francisco. So thanks for how you treat our firefighters out there. I hear a lot of how well we take care of the public, but I also hear we get cards and letters at the station. It's pretty gratifying to see how the community has embraced the fire department here. So thank you for that.
So this is the point in time where we just simply close the meeting, but I really wanted to tell all of you a sincere thank you for being here. This is the type of democracy that we all hope for. One of the chiefs mentioned engagement. And there are many times in this hall on a Wednesday night where there are very few members of the public, but it's always better when the seats are full and you're telling us of your concerns. And it was good for all of the council people who are here tonight, Richard Garberino, Vice Mayor Pradeep Gupta, and myself, to sit here and listen to you, to listen for once. But I did want to say that in the very near future, for the first time in probably decades, there's going to be a State of the City address. It's my turn as mayor, so I get to do the address. And it'll be in the social hall that's part of the MSB. But instead of having it at noon time with primarily the business community, we're going to have it at 6:30 because I want you all to be the first invitees. And that's where we will talk about the future of our city and what we want for South San Francisco. So that's June 14. It's in the social hall, 6:30 PM. And I, what day of the week is it? Tuesday? Tuesday. June 14. Oh, and I'm told that Carol Matsumoto is with us. Yes, and thank you for joining us. So you're all invited. And there'll be a postcard in the mail. That's Mike Futrell's new way is postcards. A lot of postcards, but it's made the difference because we've not had turnouts like this before. So I'd like to again thank the men in blue, or blue and white, and they're the very best of South San Francisco, and we are very proud of them. So thank you for joining us tonight. [applause][1757.91]